Assuming that there is a no. If there are any public comments, I don't know if we have anybody here on our Zoom, but if there are, we can perhaps just table them until that comes, that topic comes up in our agenda. The next item is if we can have a status report on pending items.
So there were two plans that went to the board supervisors on the 27th. The Grayswoods, Grace Point Phase 6D was approved. And the Ida T. Euphine Hospital was also conditionally approved. And I just wanted to make note that they approved it with the A1 setbacks.
Very good. Pending items?
So we have two other work commission tasks that have not been started yet with the EV charging infrastructure and to new work at our bicycle park.
Very good. And how about sign ordinance update?
So this is where we all agreed to start with our work session task for 2021. So I, we have asked Lindsay and Mark from College Township to talk with us tonight about their ordinance there as they are now, or have been, I think for several years, compliant with the court case Reed versus Tom Gilbert. And I did also attach a couple of the APA articles regarding the case, just to kind of help break it down a little bit better. We can talk about those more if you would like. But since Lindsay and Mark were kind enough to join us tonight, we can go ahead and start with them. Lindsay's going to give us kind of a little bit of an overview. And then Mark, there's zoning officers here as well to help answer questions or maybe to get into a little bit more details for us. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lindsay.
Hi, thanks Nicole. Hello, everyone. My name is Lindsay Schock. Hi. I'm the principal planner for College Township and I have Mark Abrosak here. He's our zoning officer. He's been administering this ordinance now for four years, maybe close to five years. So he knows it really well and I can just give you a brief overview of what is in our ordinance and how we got here. So a few years back, we had a proposal for three large billboard signs to come into the township. One was near the Hickey's Beer Distributor, the other at Lizard Lumber, and the other was between the new VA hospital and Struble. We denied them because they were too big and didn't fit within our criteria. So they sued. And when they sued, I guess the judge looked through the ordinance. The only thing he could find that we were really in violation of was content. We weren't content neutral. They, reason why they said that is because what we did in the past was require people to write down what was on their signs just for their licensing and billing purposes. So our senior support specialist could keep track of what company had what sign and what it said, just to, you know, connect what it said with the company for billing. So that didn't work anymore. And now we were told to update our ordinance to be in compliance with the Reed versus Gilbert case, which Nicole shared with you. I had the opportunity to read over some of those articles and they're good. They're just, you know, overviews of why, why, why it happened. So I believe it was Mark Hodren prior to my turn at Ferguson Township, or I'm sorry, College Township. He prepared this ordinance with Mark Abrosak as well. So one thing I wanted to point out here is as a result of the Gilbert case, we tried to make our purpose and intent for the ordinance very strong. We start off, and I think this is kind of the one thing, and I remember when I did work on our sign ordinance in, when I was at Ferguson Township, we worked on the purpose and intent just to make it clear that we are not regulating content within this ordinance. So we said that here in purpose, that it is not the intent or purpose of this ordinance to regulate the messages displayed on any sign. And also this chapter is to regulate any building design or any displays not defined as a sign. So we kind of put it out there that we're not purposely regulating content. So some of the other things here are we're going to regulate the number, size, location, and type, illumination, and other physical characteristics of signs. And if you had read over those articles that Nicole sent around, that is one of the things to take away from there. Maintain, enhance, and improve the aesthetics of the environment of the township type, preventing visual clutter resulting from competition among signs. So I think if a lot of you get to other places that don't have sign regulations, think of, and I know we use this a lot, but if you think of Plank Road and Altoona and the signs as you go there, it's just so cluttered. And I think this way to maintain that, that those aesthetics was important in this case. And then improve the visual appearance of the township while providing for effective means of communication consistent with constitutional guarantees and the township's goal of public safety and aesthetics. And finally encourage signs which are attractively desired, designed in order to enhance the economic value as well as the visual characteristic of the various parts of the community. So with this purpose and intent, we see that the signs that were proposed in why we were sued were something that wouldn't be in compliance with the purpose and intent of this ordinance. So that's kind of what I wanted to go over. Mark is here. If you have any specific questions, I know there's, you know, we're talking with Penn State about Innovation Park. They have a sign master plan and I believe the Mount Nittany Medical Center as well has a sign master plan. There are some pretty innovative things I feel in this ordinance that would be beneficial to other municipalities in the region having some of these regulations as well. So does anyone have any questions for me or thoughts?
So Lindsay, am I, are we then, on the application, so are we, we're not to ask what the, what is going to be on the sign? We, so in terms of content, that is not permitted to be asked. Am I, was that, do I understand that correctly?
I will say, we, we require the, the sign rendition, but if you're McDonald's and you want to, and it says Burger King, we don't care. We, our, our previous ordinance required this, the, the sign to be on the property it represents. The new ordinance has taken that out. So, so we've regulated based on, in other ways, like limiting the number of freestanding signs, limiting sign area for buildings. All freestanding signs are held to the same size standards. There was a lot of work done with this to sort of accomplish what the ordinance was doing before, but by making it content neutral. And it did cause some problems, like one exemption we had was for realer signs, you know, house for sale. We no longer can exempt them because of, because of the content that it's a realer, a realty sign or for sale or lease. So we've regulated that by, if, if, I don't know if you all have a copy of our ordinance, but we exempt any sign, three square feet in area or smaller. That gets us our realer sign. We also limit the number of exempt signs per property. So residential house can't have 23 square foot signs in their front yard.
What is the max?
I would have to, I would have to look. Part of it, I believe it may be five, and then there's some changes for, there are some, some provisions in there for excessive road frontage. I believe that you can, can increase. And I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to dig through our ordinance, find that. That would be under exempt.
Are you asking, what is the maximum square footage for any sign or something in a residential area?
I was asking, maximum number in residential area?
Okay. We limit to, to, not to exceed 30 square feet in total area of all sign faces. So someone could have 10, that's pretty open. Someone could have 10 three-square-foot signs in their yard.
Do you have a maximum size in a residential area too?
We just, we have the exempt, the, the sign in a residential area, if it's someone's house with a home occupation, that would fall under the limits that fall under our home occupation.
Well, we do, unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a copier of your ordinance. So we're flying blind here a little bit. In, in a residential area, is there a maximum size for a single sign?
We, we do not allow signs in our, in our R1. Now, if there's a home occupation, we, we would allow for one sign. And that would fall under our general, basic criteria for our, our sign ordinance. Most people with a little home occupation decide to just go with a three-square-feet exempt sign. And those are very few and far between.
Okay. What about in your commercial areas? What are your regulations there? Let me ask a more broad question. Do you regulate signs separate zoning district?
No.
Here's a question. Well, I mean, you have different regulations for commercial districts than you do for residential districts, right?
Well, sign it, yes. But industrial, commercial, gateway, commercial, the, they all fall under the maximum sign areas that we allow under our ordinance.
To go back, 32 square feet is the maximum area for a sign in a residential, for a residential land use.
You folks had any issues with like political signs if, let's say it's a large election season and somebody wants to put 14 different, you know, individual signs in their yard representing 14 different candidates?
That has not come up. We're waiting for it. Thing that we operate under in College Township is we're generally complaint driven. So if, if your neighbor has 30 signs in their yard and you don't care, but chances are someone's going to complain. So we, we generally, except for the obvious slap you in the face, we try to be more complaint driven.
I mean, that's, that's one of the issues. Years ago, Patent Township used to issue permits for political signs about 19 years ago. And that became very problematic.
I can see that. To me, it seems like 30 square feet for a residential property, that's, that's a lot of signs. I'm guessing that you could have, you know, probably, I don't know, 10 signs or so on, on a property?
That was, that was discussed at length with our planning commission when, when we went through it. And, and the end of the day, they said, well, you know what? If somebody wants to put in 31 square foot signs in their yard, let them. Chances are the neighbors are going to take care of it before long. And, and that, there were a lot of things that were difficult with this content neutral thing where we couldn't exempt political signs. We couldn't exempt realtor signs. So we had to do the best of what we could with what we were working with.
Well, you know what? I was reading, I was reading the wrong line. I apologize. No, I was getting them confused. So no residential land use shall have a freestanding sign unless it's exempt in the exempt section. The sign area for all freestanding signs, my apologies, unless stated otherwise, shall have the maximum area of 32 square feet if single-faced and 64 square feet if double-faced. So I hope that clears it up.
Which most all signs are double-faced. So you're still looking at, yeah, about the, I guess around 10 signs. Is there any language in here about the location of the sign? So it's my understanding that we, it's frowned upon. Doug, maybe you can clarify this, but the, the signs for all intent and purposes are typically to be on the inside of the, so not between the sidewalk and the road, but they're encouraged to be on the, on the property owner's property where, between the sidewalk and the house. Because I can see certain intersections that if there wasn't any language in there, that you could, you know, you could block the view of traffic, et cetera. So that's, now here it is.
Yeah.
So my suggestion, sorry to interrupt. My suggestion is, is just pulling up Caltrans from California. They actually have a policy on temporary political signs that states, temporary political signs shall not be placed within the right-of-way of any highway or within 660 feet of the edge of visible from right of it. So, so basically it looks like there are states out there that have language that is, that appears to be content neutral, that serves, that serves the intended purpose of keeping sightlines clear for drivers.
But if they call those out as political signs, they are not being content neutral. They are exempting a specific class of sign, which violates the Gilbert, Reed versus Gilbert.
We do prohibit signs in the right-of-way. And we do drive around every once in a while, especially, you know, after elections and pull them out.
I find it, just, Ken, back when we used to have permits, so if I understand you correctly, in Patent Township, how, how many years ago? 15 years ago or so?
That was 19 years ago.
So 19 years ago, if you wanted to have a political sign on your property, you got a permit. Is that accurate?
Yep.
No, no, we just permitted, permitted the candidates. Yeah.
You permitted the candidates. So Doug, when we permit the candidates, I guess that would be mostly for local politics. Then, and then in that, was there a language that said a, a, after an election, there was so many days where this, days, weeks where the signs were removed?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we had, it was three days that they were supposed to be removed after the election.
So has anyone had, does anyone have any thoughts or has anyone done any research on, on asking that maybe after, you know, when elections are over, within a certain timeframe, that the political signs not be displayed? Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Again, under Reed versus Gilbert, you can't mention political signs. So actually, yeah, you will have to, one issue we'll have to deal with is we have not banned political signs from the right-of-way. So we'll have, that'll be a question that'll have to come up and whether people want to undertake that or not. The next question is, again, if you, as college said, you can do 10 three-foot, three-square-foot signs in your yard, doesn't matter what they say. It doesn't matter what they say, so it doesn't, you know, if, it may be an election sign from 10 years ago, we couldn't, as long as they didn't have more than 10 signs, if we adopted something like that, there's no enforcement, there's no, you know, there's nothing this township can do.
One thing else I'd throw in there, we, we have, we prohibit signs in the right-of-way. There is a process that, that can go through council to get approval for hardship properties that have no other way. But this has helped us greatly with not only the political signs, but the ABC landscaping. And, you know, you see it all the busy intersections. We buy diabetic test strips.
Do you actually pick up political signs out of the right-of-way then?
The ordinance officer and I, oddly enough, the last election cycle, I probably had 100 political signs here. We went out and we cleaned up everyone in the right-of-way. I called the Republican, local Republican office and the local Democratic office, and I said, if you want them, you got a week to come get them. They came in and picked them up. And oddly enough, this most recent election cycle, we had very few of those pop-up along the roadways everywhere signs. I think if, and it's, it's helpful with the, just the general litter. Every time we see one of these business signs thrown in at intersection, we pick it up. And I've noticed we're, we're finding fewer and fewer as time goes on because people know if you put it out in College Township, it's going to disappear in a few days.
Okay, well, good for you. Do you pick up political signs in Penn Dots right-of-way?
Yes, our, we call, we call it out as the right-of-way, so we're taking them from the Penn Dot right-of-way as well.
Okay, thanks.
Planning Commission, does anyone, does anyone have any thoughts on the number? I guess my, my hunch is that 30 square feet is, is a lot of signs. And if I'm, you know, if, if that's my neighbor and, you know, we take Patent Township, a lot of these lots are not that big. I don't feel as, I clearly support, you know, the, the ability to have signs and collect or express everyone's political views. But if 10 signs is, is a lot, in my opinion. So do we want to discuss that? Do we want to talk about taking the square footage from 30, 30?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. There's another court case that throws a wrinkle into regulating political signs. And that's a 1994 case that actually, that's before the other, the other case. And the US Supreme Court ruled that display of political and other types of signs on residential property is a unique, important, and protective means of communication that towns cannot restrict the display of such signs. The decision hasn't been overturned. So you're going to run into a situation of where any attempt to regulate a political sign is going to get you sued even though it's content neutral because of a 1994 decision. That's actually one of the reasons why if you start parsing all the different laws and going between everything, actually identifying a political sign puts it outside of the realm because, again, you are complying with the Supreme Court law on that. So, Supreme Court ruling. So we have more problems than just, than just the case that we seem to be focusing on right now.
Yeah, that was one flaw. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
What about just 10 signs in one's yard, whether political or not political, is a lot of signs?
There is a regular.
Unfortunately, if, go ahead.
There can't be.
Lindsay, you're a guest here, go ahead.
If they can't be more than 100, take up on more than 100 lineal feet of your property in the case of a residential, in the case of any other, then it is 300 linear feet. And Gilbert didn't, actually, the Reed versus Gilbert case didn't reference any other Supreme Court cases. And I think that's kind of where it's flawed because there's really nothing to back it up. So that's one thing that doesn't really work out, but thank you.
Okay. Excuse my naivety, but why do we have to worry about what others, what's been done in the past? Why can't we just set up our regulations the way we want to set up our regulations?
Because if you do something unconstitutional, you have no, you have no regulation at all.
But, I mean.
The issue is if somebody wants to put up a 200-square-foot billboard in Patent Township and they take us to court and we, they find out that our, that our regulation on billboard is unconstitutional, they're going to be able to put up their 200-square-foot billboard. So that's why we want to be within the law. We have to be within the US law. There is no state law other than, that I'm aware of, but constitutional law is the one that's driving this. So that's, that's really, that's why. Because if we don't do things right, somebody's going to take us to court for, and we'll lose and they'll get to do whatever they want, whether we like it or not. So if we want to, we should strive to do what we want in a legal manner.
Well, yeah, in a legal manner, but I mean, I mean, we set up rules and ordinances all the time.
Yeah, but we do those within, within context of constitutional law, state law, and other local law that might apply, but.
But since there is no state law.
Planning and zoning is all, is all subject to state, state oversight and state law. We don't have 100% autonomy.
But you said there was no state law.
On signage.
On signage, yeah.
Yeah.
The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is what we normally go by when we're updating ordinances to ensure that.
But it doesn't speak to signage.
No, it doesn't speak to signage, but for any other ordinances dealing with planning, they do, are consistent with the MPC. We can always be more strict than the MPC, but.
No, no. It depends, depends what the, depends what the regulation is. You can't impact, you can't be more strict upon a property owner. You can't impose more, more limitation on the property owner than MPC permits.
No, yes, I agree with you there, yes.
We can set up setbacks though, right? It has to be set back so many feet from the property line? I mean, we, any toes there?
As long as they're reasonable.
I just don't know why.
You can't tell everybody that you have 500-foot setbacks. You have to have reasonable setbacks.
Right, but you could, you could say like a, well, like in a residential area like patent, like, oh, what's it called?
Forest.
Park Forest, yeah. I mean, how, how far are the houses set back? You know, they're what, about 20 feet back from the property line?
25.
25? So you could set it to be, you know, 15 feet back. I mean, if they want to put signs up, they can put them up like right in their front yard, not towards the sidewalk maybe. I mean, we could, we wouldn't have to do it like that far, but I mean, if we were, we could do that to have, so there would be uniformity when you're driving in a neighborhood. And I think that's a lot of times what, what gets upsetting to the eyes and to people's sense of space, maybe?
I think, I think Patent Township and the surrounding townships overall have done a wonderful job with signage. And when we do go down Plank Boulevard in Altoona, you know, it is a perfect example of, of kind of, of what we have tried not to have happen in state college. So I think commercially, we've done a great job for the most part. But, but as long as we're on this topic with residential, I'm still confused. To me, 10 signs in a, in a one's yard is, or 30 square feet, that's a lot of space. So if we're going to address the commercial part of it, why are we saying, yeah, but in our neighborhoods, you know, you take Park Forest and they're all basically a third of an acre. You know, potentially every property could have however many, up to 30 signs. So I, I feel like there needs to be, we need to reel that in a little bit. So I'm more of, I, I'm feeling is that, that 20 square feet of signage, which still means someone could have 20 signs, is sufficient.
I think as you go, it.
We've done such a great job on commercial, why are we saying in residential that it can be, you know, 30 signs in a property? That's a bit much.
No, we're not saying, College Township said that. We don't have any.
I get it, I get it. But right now, as, as long as we're on the subject, I think we need to come to a number, a square footage in Patent Township that's practical, and, and I think 30 is excessive. I'm feeling that 20 is sufficient.
I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse and what I would recommend is that we. I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse and what I would recommend is that we get uh, more issues settled with the, the law first before we start imposing any, any numbers artificially, because we do not want to hang a hat on saying, oh, well, we're only going to allow twenty, when the answer is we can't regulate it, period. So I think we need, we need somebody like Betsy Dupree here to uh, give us a brief on what the, uh, what the exact holding of the Reed case and the, uh, Galeo case, uh, the nineteen ninety-four Galeo case, um, has. Because if the Galeo case allows us, basically says, we can't regulate political signs, period, end of sentence. Anything that we do, um, and, and college townships, you know, uh, from what it sounds like with this case and college townships, um, sign ordinance, their ordinance is already unconstitutional again. Because they are putting that political sign, while it might be compliant with Reed, it's in compliant with stare decisis of Galeo and they're separate cases. And they're going to get nailed and we don't want to be in that situation and getting nailed ourselves.
One thing I would, I would argue that we make a provision to allow signs in residential property. We're not saying you cannot have your political signs, but I, I think we would be safe if, if this were to be challenged. Because we have provided ample opportunity for someone to, to display their political beliefs or whatever their belief may be. But we've capped it so we don't allow, uh, billboards in a front yard of a residential. I think I would venture to beg to differ with you on this, and I think we've met the burden to allow for that expression.
I don't think you're going to, I, I don't think so. You do not pass strict scrutiny on the test. And when you're dealing with the first amendment, it's a strict scrutiny regulation. And they have put the bar very, very, very high here for us.
Well, Mark, Bill, there has to be some sort of limit in residential neighborhoods. So there is a limit right now. If I want to have a monstrous billboard in front of my property that's fifty yards by fifty yards, I'm not allowed. So we already have that in place.
Also somebody from the neighborhood is going to take it down anyways.
But, but I mean, it's, I, I, I feel like I do, I, 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 I would like to hear Betsy Dupree's thoughts on it, but, um, I would like to, I, I think you're on to something there and worthy of, of us, uh, running that by her. Um, but maybe as a, as a, maybe as the planning commission, if we kind of collectively come up with a number that we feel is appropriate, let's kick that to Betsy and have her see what she thinks about it.
So, so does that make sense tonight to say that next month we'll try to invite her to our work session? And we've obtained information and we can run some things past her at that point, Brian? Does that make sense? Let me, let me talk to her first. She's not a constitutional scholar, so she's probably going to go look for somebody else in her firm who might have a better grasp on this.
I would also highly suggest if we can invite one of the constitutional lawyers, uh, law professors from Penn State, that would be helpful as well.
I mean, we can look and see if there's somebody who can talk about that.
And, and when we're going down that road, do we as a planning commission want to at least give some insight, say, hey, it is our, at what point do we want to just try and accomplish, uh, some sort of, of limit in residential, whether that be ten, twenty, thirty, forty, I don't know. But shouldn't we try and get that established now? So that way, uh, whomever is, is we're seeking legal advice to has a little bit better idea of what we are trying to accomplish. Do we want to do an informal poll and everyone can, you know, I guess our choices would be, you know, and give us some options and then collectively figure out what the planning commission's preference is?
Brian, I guess one question I would have is have we had major issues with too many signs in a yard?
I don't know.
I mean, because
I would ask you that. Maybe it's a non-issue.
That's, that's what I'm thinking of because I, I don't recall too many times that we've received very many, you know, phone calls. As Mark said, you know, a lot of times, a lot of information is complaint driven. Um, and I really am having a difficult time remembering a great deal of times we've received complaints about, you know, signs on residential properties.
Uh, true. Well, I, I wouldn't, I, I'm, I'm happy. I'm, I'm glad you shared that, but if we're on this subject and that's what we're doing, now would be the time to to, to address it, but I don't have a real strong preference other than if I were a resident in, which, you know, I, I am obviously a resident in patent township, but if people next door had a bunch of signs, after a while it would just get old.
Actually, after a while you ignore them.
Yeah. But that's it. You're ignoring them because you're likely annoyed.
I can, I can tell you folks that I believe we went through like fourteen or fifteen renditions of this ordinance until it was finalized. Um, and this is no different than the discussions that the college township planning commission had and putting this ordinance together. Uh, I found what worked is, uh, our planner wrote an initial ordinance. And each meeting they would take another section, change it and, and go through one section at a time. And then went through the review with legal counsel and then it was revised again. This thing was just, this was the, the thing that would never go away, but it finally came to a conclusion. And whatever you folks do, I don't think you will craft a, a sign ordinance in one or two planning commission sessions. I have a feeling this is going to be one that's going to be on the long haul.
So Ken, is there, is there a number? Did we, is there, so is thirty square feet the number on residential, uh, lots?
That, that is what college township planning commission put together and, and where we ended up in our ordinance.
And, and currently in Patton, is there an, is there a limit?
There's, we don't have a limit on residential properties of the number assigned somebody wants to place on their property.
Well, that
I just feel like we're in the thick of it.
Yeah, what we would call today, first amendment signs, which would be political signs or, or religious signs or something, you know, or, you know, I hate my neighbors or whatever you want to put out there on your, you know, we have no limit on those currently. Now, if somebody want, you know, you can't put up a commercial sign in your front yard. You can't say, go shop at Subway or buy Subway. You can't do that of any size.
But then there's one into the content neutral.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion.
So guys, I, I, I think I, I'm very much in support of having at least some sort of limit on, on the residential neighborhood. Um, we've done a great job as I said on
We'll put one in. We're, I mean, we'll have a number in there. Whether the number's two or fifty is what we'll talk about in the future.
Very good.
Or we could even just base it like certain number per square foot of frontage.
It could. You know, we just, as long as we treat everybody the same way.
Same, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sharon, that might make more sense because it, it, that is a logical approach.
Cause you're going to have some really large lots that it won't seem so cluttered. And then you're going to have a lot of really smaller lots that the same number would just be ridiculous and, and irritating to the neighbors. Yeah. So.
I've always found it helpful that when you prepare an ordinance and then have it enacted, we like to work with it for about a year and see how things work out. And then if it's flawed, you can go back and revisit some of those areas that you, you don't feel are strong enough.
Yeah. I think that's why. What did you guys find in, in, in state college? Um, did you, did you have any problems? Once you put the ordinance in place? Anything that you would revisit?
Um, as far as from my standpoint administering this, I'm pleased with it. Uh, I'm a dinosaur. I didn't, don't like change. I didn't like when the ordinance that I learned changed. But this, I, I personally, I find this to be very effective. I think it covers everything we need to cover. Um, we, we do have frequent requests for greater sign area being allowed on buildings, which we consistently deny. We just had a zoning hearing case last week, uh, last month, and we have another one coming. But, uh, we've been very uniform with enforcement and I, to this, in the two plus years that this has been enacted, uh, we have not really had any issues.
Good to know. Any further discussion about the sign ordinance?
So for my clarification, there is nothing allowed like in, it has to be on your own personal property. This is what we're talking about, right? Or your own commercial property. It's, it can't be in, on any roadside that are well, just like when I get on the freeway, like this, especially this election cycle and, and the one, two years ago. Um, when I'm getting on those, um, the onramps, sometimes you see a lot of signs there. And is that allowed with all of this? No.
With our ordinance, no, if it's in a right of way.
Okay.
And as I said, uh, to the, the last election cycle, I know we picked up close to a hundred signs, called the respective political parties and said, come get them if you want them, repurpose them, but they cannot be in our right of way. And, and the numbers that we had in our right of ways, this most recent, uh, election cycle were very negligible.
Now, Mark, is that kind of, when you're collecting them off of the, like, when you're on a freeway on ramp, I mean, that's dangerous. Who is ever trying to collect them?
Well, we have my safety yellow vest on and the amber lights on the truck and be careful.
Okay, okay.
And so question, yeah, is college alone in that? Because I certainly feel like Patton and Ferguson, I see them all over the place. So if I, if, as a whole, um, how many of our municipalities are sensitive to signs and, and right of ways? Is it just college or does anybody know?
Ferguson used to do it. Um, when I was there, the ordinance enforcement officer would drive around and find some signs in the right of way and take them, try to contact the right person. And if not, then, uh, they were disposed of.
Ken? Sounds like a lot of work. And, and you know, I mean, there's, we have to think that through too. Uh, but I guess, Mark, what you're saying is it's manageable.
It has become much more manageable as we got more aggressive with the removal of these signs. We are not seeing them appear like they used to. And a lot of these are the repeats. Uh, I'm sure you've all seen the, we buy diabetic test strips. Um, mattress sale, call this number. There are some of those, those ones that you'll see throughout the entire center region, and I've even seen them in other counties, other states. There are some of these that are, you will see, hey, that's the same sign that I just took last week. Um, eventually at the, for us, we, I found the initial rush of, of picking up signs. There were times we'd go out twice a month and pick up thirty plus signs. Now we're hard pressed to get thirty in a two month period. I, I think people are have stopped, uh, uh, the, the last, the, the only ones I've ever notified to come pick up your signs have been the political parties. And there was, uh, we took a haul of like thirty some kid to kid resale signs. I called that, that woman and she was here immediately to get them and we have not had another one in the township in two years.
Very good. Ken, is there anything that we're not discussing that perhaps we should? That you get complaints on? You're on mute.
I think right now probably our, our biggest thing, Brian, is, you know, we want to start off with trying to get our ordinance compliant so that, you know, it is constitutional. And that's the very first part. That's what our goal was to get started with at the moment. Um, a lot of the smaller ends that we're talking about, we're going to have to hammer out as we go. But I think as Mark said, you know, this is going to be a, it's not going to be a, a short task. I think right now it sounds as if, you know, we got the door pride open. We have an idea of what direction we need to start heading. But as Bill had said too, we want to get some, you know, legal advice to start with so that we're making sure that what we're working on is actually going to be applicable.
Doug, do you see anything that, do we have, uh, any commercial areas that's just, that seems to be problematic? That is a repeat complaints?
No, no, but we just need to craft a new set of regulations. I mean, A, we don't want to make anybody non-compliant, so we'll have to figure out how you bring a content neutral a content neutral basis to commercial. I mean, a lot of, I suspect, I mean, a lot of, we, we have categories of signs for commercial based on what they say. So we have the advertising signs, which we currently limit. And there's certain, other things like directional signs and things like that, that we don't limit, but it sounds like they'll have to either be exempted or they'll have to be, they'll have to be part of some sort of limit. So, um, we'll have to work through each of those, each of those categories and situations and, um, figure out how we can do it. And, you know, we'll look for other communities to get suggestions from how they, how they handle it.
Very good. Any other, go ahead.
I think considering, you know, changing the ordinance and then trying not to have all of your signs being non-conforming. I think that's something that you have to consider too. Um, definitely, uh, Mr. Erickson had a good point there. So, uh, that's always a challenge, of course. Um, I know going through this twice at Ferguson, it was, it's a challenge. It's, it's hard to come up. And it's just, you know, how it, that's not content neutral and you'll run into that, but you know, if you need any help, we're here. If you have any questions, we're willing to help you.
So I'm going to pick a, a quick stab, Lindsay. I'm going to guess that a lot of the national chains probably, am I right that they often are, maybe many of them don't run into signage issues in a lot of areas of the US? So when they come here, it's a bit foreign. Am I right on that?
No, they run into it all the time.
I want to ask that from Lindsay and Mark. Um, I mean, that's, go ahead.
I can tell you, uh, Walmart, uh, with their rebranding when I was here, uh, they fought us, but they agreed to make everything compliant within our ordinance. I mean, that's one of our big nationals. Um, the, uh, most recent, the zoning hearing board we just had was the, uh, pending rural king that is coming. They wanted, uh, about five times as the amount of signage we allow. Um, we couldn't convince them to adhere to what our ordinance was and, and according to their, their guy said, listen, it's corporate, we'll go through the motions. Um, and we, we are, the zoning hearing board upheld our ordinance and said, nope, this is the area you get and that's all you get.
Well, that's, uh, uh, that's a good point in this conversation because anyone that's going to challenge it, it's, it's likely going to be the commercials, you know, the big players that have the means to take everybody to, you know, to court, et cetera. It will likely, you know, I mean, not to say the residential portion wouldn't be as litigious, but it, it obviously it's not going to be. It's going to be the commercial aspect.
Yeah.
All right. I think we beat a dead horse and, and go ahead, Sharon.
Well, can we get a copy of, uh, or do we already, I, is there a, a website or something that we can go to?
We'll have Nicole send out a copy of college townships.
And how about, should we look at Ferguson's too?
You know, we'll work on seeing what others have.
CollegeTownship.org, our website, you can pull our ordinance up.
Okay.
Very good. Any, any further discussion on this?
I just want to reiterate a couple of things before we move on, if that's okay. So for that time, um, cause this
So for next time, because this was kind of an open-ended discussion, so maybe some things I'll try to focus on for next time for us to talk about. It's kind of trying to dig a little bit more into the right-of-way and whether or not we are able to just say, can't have signs in the right-of-way or what those restrictions could look like. Looking more into the time limits, because I do know that College Township has a section about time limits and for their temporary signs. And then kind of trying to dig a little bit more into ways to limit size and number so that we're trying to focus on those elements as opposed to the type of sign. And I will, I will send out where you can find College Township's ordinance, and then I'm going to also start looking into Ferguson. I don't know how much of this I'll be able to present coherently in the next four weeks, but these are things I'll try to bring forward that we can kind of focus on for now. And yeah, Ferguson is also REED compliant, so I can look into theirs and how it might differ from what we heard from college and see, you know, how we can kind of maneuver in there if we'd like to use any of those regulations.
Because I think the important thing is we have some continuity. I mean, since one just flows into the other too. And that gives us strength also when we're coming up with our ordinances on this or making every making sure things are compliant.
Yeah, and there's really no sense in us trying to come up with something completely different if we, me too, and, you know, College and Ferguson have done a lot of work on theirs. And if we're happy with, with what they have and we find through going through all our avenues with talking to different solicitors or different legal counsel, that what they have is sound. Obviously, you know, Brian, some others have mentioned that maybe having, you know, 10 three-square-foot signs in one residence isn't where we want to go. So those are some of the more nuanced things we can maybe look at a little bit more closely as we get further in. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
If there's nothing else on that, let's move on to the next item. Anything else on signs before we move on?
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Next item, number five, rezoning request for 101 Hallbaker Industrial Drive.
Doug, do you want me to talk about it? Do you want to talk about it? I wasn't sure.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the property owner at 101 Hallbaker Drive is requesting to have his property rezoned from industrial to commercial and the location map that you're all looking at kind of shows where the property is located in the township along North Atherton, adjacent from, is that a bank? I forget what bank that is.
That's a bank.
But it's kind of by autos and you can see the residential neighborhood that's across the street there. So they've also provided a letter that I gave you guys with the agenda materials, if you've had a chance to read over kind of their justification as to why they rezoned and why it could be good for the township. So this is more just kind of putting it on your radar. We're not taking any action on this, but I just wanted to make everybody aware. So if you're thinking about it, I'll dig into this a little bit more for the March meeting and kind of do an assessment of what that could mean to have this property taken from industrial to commercial. And then Doug, we can talk about this separately if you would like.
Well, if anybody has questions tonight, let's get them out on the table.
Well, I was going to bring up the college agreement that we provide them with industrial and if it's going to be.
That in more detail the next meeting. It's more procedural stuff. But I mean, if planning commission members have questions about this particular property, have questions about what a change might mean, questions about allowable uses, let's get, let's talk about those right now.
Well, wasn't that commercial a few years ago when the motorcycle shop was there?
No, it was still deemed industrial.
Oh, okay.
So Doug, when we go from industrial to commercial, we pick up more uses for that property.
Stop this screen share so we can see who's talking. Thanks, okay.
So Doug, when we go from industrial to commercial, that property has more choices of the use. Is that the biggest reason why one would want to?
I would say that's what's motivating the owner to make the request.
And what is the bank across the catty corner from that? It's, I think it's Reliance Bank, but that is zoned commercial, correct?
Correct.
And then what about, if when we go, so what's kind of, what's our, what is all the zoning uphill from this property? Is it all industrial?
Yeah, basically what it is, Brian, this property sits on the edge of the zoning district boundary. But if you're going in Hallbaker Industrial Drive, the right-hand side is commercial, the left-hand side is industrial until you start past the entrance to autos. From that point forward, it's all industrial the rest of the way up the hill. And as Sharon had asked, how the motorcycle shop was in there, the motorcycle shop went to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board allowed the motorcycle shop because new motorcycles were brought in in crates. So they actually had to assemble the motorcycle so they could sell that. They deemed that that was enough, you know, manufacturing on-site for it to fit in the industrial district.
Are there any expenses to the township if it is changed to commercial?
No, no.
No, okay.
No, I mean, the question here is what do you think is the best land use for that property? And you get to decide, the question always is who's it best for? Best for the owner, best for the community, best for you.
Doug, my question is precedent. So do we, is the township, if this has changed, then we have the neighboring parcel. So do we set any precedence for that area to be concerned about in the future?
No, not really. The municipalities have probably the most discretion on rezonings as they do anywhere under the municipality's planning code. So you don't really set precedent. Somebody, if you, if you rezone this property and the next property next to it came up and said, well, you rezoned that guy, why don't you rezone me? And we said, because we don't like you, he still can't take you to court. There's no, there's, there's nothing in state law or federal law that creates a precedent from a rezoning type of thing. So now, you know, on the other hand, if you start changing zoning in one spot, it may mean you probably may do it again. So but it doesn't create a legal precedent. It may create a trend. Which is why one of the things you might want to think about when you, you know, when you start thinking about this and in the different aspects, do you want to do that or not?
Any other thoughts on, from the planning commission?
I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't see a problem, you know, if it would help for it have something to come in there. You know, my only question was if someone else would approach us in the future, how this would, you know, impact that, but Doug already addressed that.
Well, maybe, I mean, one of the things we may want to look at then is, you know, if you want to make this just the sole thing here that, you know, when the next guy comes in, why is it good here and not good for the next one too?
When these lands were developed, that's when they were designated, that's when those zones were designated, correct? So when the developer came in, he knew that those were.
No, I mean, they were designated zoning before they were developed.
Oh, okay.
Zoning precedes. I mean, GW Autobody was the first tenant there. And then they outgrew the building and moved up the hill.
Up the road, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug, does the township have any obligation about the, you know, the folks that border this property? I guess we do on the other side of Atherton, the corner of Atherton and Douglas.
Other than to so tell them, if you change the zoning, and they ask, what would you, what would you say to them?
My question to you is, is we as a township have, we're required to notify, I guess, bordering property owners, am I right?
Yeah, we would notify anybody who's either directly adjacent to it or across the street. Yeah. I mean, but we would notify, we would actually send out notices to a much bigger area than that. That's who we're legally required to notify.
So I just have one unintended consequence thought that if we switch this from industrial to commercial, that's going to probably increase the value of the property on the other corner, which from the overhead shot appears to be trailers, which we know that we already have a crunch on low-income housing in this area. So that may be an unintended consequence of, of changing it may cause those to become something else.
Since they're zoned residential, it probably wouldn't change. It probably decreased the cost, decreased the value of the property if you're thinking of zoning change across the street. They'd have to come in for a zoning change too. For them to increase the value of the property, they'd have to get a zoning change. So you have that question. Just because there's a commercial use across the street doesn't make a residential property any more valuable. Most people probably tell you it makes it less valuable, but.
That property was brought in twice to the township over the years to ask to be rezoned to commercial.
Property values, even if we change the zoning on that property, the value of it as, as for which their taxes are assessed probably will not change until it changes, would not change until it changed hands and there was a transfer of some sort or another. Then the assessor would look at how much would the transfer, how much they paid for the property and change the assessment based on that. Because if somebody, yeah, I mean, if we change the zoning and somebody came in there with essentially an office use, I don't know that the value would change at all.
On Ken?
Currently permitted under industrial too. Sorry, Jim. Go ahead.
Ken, your comment about the, someone coming in and asked to change it before, is that the R2 on the southwest corner?
Yes, those, where those two mobile homes are, that property was brought in quite a few years ago and a zoning change was proposed to have that zone commercial. And that, you know, request was denied. At that point in time, that's when the property owner installed those two mobile homes. That's been quite some time ago.
Out of spite, you know?
Yeah.
Well, this might spur him to bring him back in again.
It's amazing, his spite did exactly what you wanted him to do.
So and it wouldn't make any, if we rezoned it, it probably wouldn't change the amount of traffic.
I would, well. Well, I will, in general, a commercial use is probably going to generate more traffic than an industrial use.
Anything that would be too much for that intersection?
That's a good question that we should ask. And we should, I mean, if you change the zoning to commercial, then the full range of commercial uses are there. So it could be everything from a doctor's office to a Burger King or a Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, we need to prepare ourselves that it could be a Chick-fil-A or a Starbucks.
So you know, those are the kind of things that should go into your decision-making.
Yeah, so how much, how much traffic is that? Do they, I mean, they do traffic studies, right, on, like for flow through that intersection? Is that something, under Ken's purview?
And we can try to quantify that for you.
I mean, is it important or is it?
If you want to know it, we'll try to give you an answer. I mean, we can, I mean, there are charts that tell us basically, you know, we can figure out how big a fast food restaurant you could put there and what that might generate in terms of traffic.
I just thought it was something worth thinking about. Because North Atherton, I mean, usually the flow goes pretty quickly. I just didn't know if it would, you know, gum up the works or anything.
That's. Well, whatever would go in there, it would be up to us as the planning commission to not allow any entrance or exit off of North Atherton, but to use Douglas or whatever called on the Atherton side.
Yeah.
I think that line would be limited to Hallbaker Industrial Drive for an access point only at this time, and it probably would stay that way.
Okay.
That's a good point, Ken. We don't have to put any special language in there. It's already or, or do we? If we don't want this property to have access to Atherton Street, is now the time to make that known?
They would have to get an HOP from PennDOT, and I'm pretty sure PennDOT would not get that close to the red light right there at Hallbaker Industrial.
I think that's in the I-99 district too, Ken, so they're automatically restricted to the, to the lesser street. We'll, we'll, we'll check that and bring back the, what requirements we currently have in place.
Planning Commission, any further comments before we move on to the next item? Okay, how about reports? Patent Township Task, Housing Task Force.
I'll give my two cents worth. We had a organizational meeting, if you, in a greet and meet in meeting. And we all submitted a little, short little bio and stuff and kind of introduced ourselves to everyone else that we didn't know. And started to do a little cogitating on how we're going to go about this. But Nicole has done a ton of work and has got us on the right track to get started. So it's, I think we'll do some good. It'll take some time, just like everything else, but it'll take time, but there's a good, good group of people.
Wonderful. Jim and Nicole, thank you for your efforts on that.
Anina wanted me to mention, I don't know what the overarching article is going to be about, because I believe Doug was talking first about patent crossing. We did an interview with Town and Gown on Friday. And it's going to feature some different housing things happening in the region, I think, because he's also going to talk to College Township, but that should be in their next issue. She wanted to make you all aware that you should be looking out for that come the end of this month, beginning in next month.
Very good. Do we have any other outstanding business? If not, I move to a turn. And then we'll move into our, our work session.
Second.
Very good. That is it. Very good. We're done.
Okay.
Bye, all.
Take care.
Take care.